More law.
The Maplewood City Council meeting for June eighth, two thousand twenty-one will now come to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll to ascertain presence of a quorum?
Councilmember Crossley?
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Canapper?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
And Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, we do not need to address item number four, as we are all present. Item number five, Attorney Graves?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would ask that the minutes of this meeting reflect that pursuant to section six, ten point zero one five of the Missouri Sunshine Law. All city council members present today can take place or take part in this meeting and vote on matters without being physically present in the chamber because of the circumstances of the COVID nineteen pandemic continuing and allowing these to be emergency proceedings held virtually. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number five, approval of council agenda. May I please have a motion?
Motion to approve the council agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number seven, public forum. If anyone in our public section would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. You are welcome to make a comment at this time.
I don't see any hands. Mayor Canapper?
All right, thank you. We will have a second comment section at towards the end of our meeting this evening. All right, item number eight, announcements. Do we have any?
Um, I do have a few. I was just going to announce about the summer concert in Hummer Park. The next one will be June twenty-third, and there will be a booth for the mayor and council again. So we're looking forward to talking to to all of you. The next event that's coming up, the big event, is Let Them Eat Art on July ninth. That's a month away, but you can make your plans now. There's lots of fun. There's lots of demonstrations of art, food, musicians, just all kinds of fun stuff. And also, I wanted to mention about the grab and go meal distribution at Immaculate Conception Church. Every Thursday, starting on June seventeenth, from one thirty to three, children eighteen and under will receive seven-day supply of breakfast and lunch meals. And fresh produce boxes and perishable staples will also be available for families. So just wanted to get the word out there about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Are there any additional announcements? All right, item number nine, approval of the May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Excuse me. All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number ten, Plan and Zoning Commission Report.
I have Kevin Sullivan, the Plan Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission Chair. I'm gonna bring Kevin in.
Thank you.
Kevin, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you all fine. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Canapper and council members for this opportunity to give a presentation to all of you and to update you on the Plan and Zoning Commission's activities and obviously answer any questions that any of you might have. Um, it's been a pleasure to have served on the commission since, and no one hold me to dates, but I think twenty-ten or twenty-eleven. And I believe I've been chair since about twenty-sixteen. I can provide a short summary of the commission's recent activities. Really, the number of meetings and petitions has declined since I was first appointed to the commission. It was pretty common for the commission to meet almost every month with an occasional month off, maybe in the summer or, you know, around the holiday season. I think the decline could be related to several things. Obviously, in twenty and twenty-one, I think the number of petitions have gone down due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Just because there might not be as much development or businesses opening during this timeframe. But also, we've changed the zoning code over the years to provide certain efficiencies for residents and businesses whereby certain items no longer need to come before the commission before they can be approved. One example is if there's an existing restaurant and it's changing hands and a new restaurant is opening, they don't have to come before the commission and get a conditional use permit. It's kind of just viewed as a added administrative hurdle and cost that, you know, that that really was kind of a waste of the petitioner's time and a waste of, you know, the commission's and the city's resources. And then I do think as well, over the years, that, you know, Maplewood is becoming more developed, you know, especially with, you know, kind of the the main business districts being filled. This year so far, we've had three meetings and six petitions. Those have included rezoning a warehouse on Commonwealth Avenue over in the Greenwood neighborhood to to a planned unit development so that an apartment building could be developed there. Further, rezoned a house on the seventy-five-hundred block of Flora that was actually part of the Sun and Planned Unit Development and rezoned that to single-family, just because it was kind of a, you know, it was just a blip from the original development, and it made more sense since it's always been used as a single-family home to keep it that way. We did a a conditional use permit for a dance studio in the seventy-four-hundred block of Manchester. And then just last night, approved the rezoning of a a lot on Lyle Avenue that has a home on it to the community business district so that it could provide additional parking for the side project pizza development that's going on there. And that was, again, kind of an anomaly where that that property had initially been zoned commercial and then was zoned several years ago to to single-family and then rezoned back. And in twenty-twenty, we had five meetings and nine petitions. You know, those included such things as revising the code to allow a shared parking relationship for the All-Star Tattoo Business on Big Bend, which I just from seeing it, it looks like it's they're continuing to work on it. We rezone Schlafly Bottle Works to a planned unit development so that they could make certain improvements and that they could work, you know, with the city to to make those improvements happen. We approved the conditional use permit for the Side Project Pizza Place where the used car dealership used to be on Manchester. We approved the Titleway of Car Wash in in Maplewood Commons. And also approved a conditional use permit for the business that is currently occupying what used to be the American Legion location on Sutton, close to the railroad tracks. Going back to twenty-nineteen, I won't go back that far, but I'll say that year we had seven meetings and fifteen petitions. And during twenty-nineteen, we continued to make proposed amendments and revisions to the zoning code. That was an effort that started in twenty-eight and kind of paused, I'd say, in 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 twenty-nineteen with, you know, with Anthony acting as the interim or being the acting city manager. And we hope to restart that process this fall. Also, in twenty-nineteen, we revised the zoning code to allow for medicinal marijuana dispensaries as required by Missouri law. And we also approved one petition for a medicinal marijuana dispensary business. But I believe that business didn't did not get a dispensary by the state. So looking forward, this year, we had two new commissioners, Amber Withacome and Mark Vandennacher, who have joined, and I think they've already provided lots of of good thoughts and perspectives. Even in the limit amount, limited amount of meetings that we had, they replaced two longtime commissioners, Jackie Robb and Mike Humbert, who were, you know, served the city well for very years, for for many years. So what we're looking forward to doing is completing the amendments of the commercial districts of the zoning code. We've completed the commercial district amendments. But we are looking forward to tackling the residential districts. You know, hoping to do it this fall and to be able to put together something so that the city council, you know, can can review and decide what to do with them. I think part of that process and something that several commissioners have expressed interest in is also to address and analyze the issue of affordable housing being available in the city. So that's that's my short and relatively sweet report, but I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sullivan. When you all are discussing how or ways to tackle affordable housing, what ideas are you all brainstorming or kind of just throwing out as possible suggestions, if any?
We have not started the discussion in earnest. I think I'm certainly no expert on the subject, but from what I've read from a zoning perspective, there can be certain amendments to the zoning code that, you know, could encourage affordable housing and incentivize it as well. So I think, you know, we're certainly going to be brainstorming and trying to, you know, come up with a, you know, with a with a principled and workable way whereby affordable housing can be made more available in the city.
I'm
Councilmember Cross?
Yeah, I don't know why I was waiting for someone to call on me like I was in class. That's not how we operate. Mr. Sullivan, thank you for your report. Just since you're before us tonight, if do you have any specific requests of this body, anything the council can do to make your job easier?
Well, I think this new, you know, concept of being able to come and and speak to you all and answer your questions is, you know, is a is a very welcome development. You know, whether I continue to service chair or whomever takes over for me, I think it's a it's a thing of value to have regular communication, you know, with with the council. And not just, you know, it's great to work with Anthony, but it's also good to have direct interaction, certainly. So I think, but beyond that, I can't nothing would really, you know, come to mind. You know, I think it's it's been a or it's been rare when Plan and Zoning has recommended something and it's been flat-out denied by the city council. If that were to happen, we might like just a reasoning behind it, because in the past, you know, when that has happened in the past, you've kind of been like, well, well, you know, so could we have a, you know, a reason as to why why the recommendation was founded bad, because I think that would help us moving forward and have a better perspective into the policymaking decisions that the council would make.
Thank you. That was it for me.
Okay.
I just have a question. Kevin, thanks so much for coming tonight. It's always good to hear your voice. Just, and this question actually may be more for Anthony and potentially Councilmember Schmidt and Mayor Canapper. How do we see the work that the Plan and Zoning Commission is going to start in the fall coordinating with our work on the ordinance review that we're gonna start probably simultaneously? I know Amber has already indicated her interest in working on zoning. So how do we see the two combining efforts?
I would assume that the Planning Commission would be the ones that make the recommendation for the zoning ordinance. I'm not sure why others would do that. That's the board there. That's what they're primarily responsible for. And then obviously, we would do it similar to what we did when we rezoned the retailer. We amended the retail districts within town and would obviously come to the city council. I I believe the council had some good changes, not a lot, but I think we would do the same thing where we would basically bring our suggested changes to the city council. The council could make the final say or the final changes if they think something should be different.
So I guess I would maybe tweak that a little bit in that you think, you know, the information I sent you guys on Friday, if you had a chance to look at it, is that, you know, I think hopefully what we're doing is developing a sort of overarching, you know, set of principles and things that we as a council want our ordinances to reflect. And so I guess I see it a little bit of not just planning and zoning coming to us with everything, maybe working back and forth with them and saying, here's some values, you know, what suggestions do you guys have? Here's some suggestions we've had from the community and sort of working together. And then, of course, you know, we hopefully will have someone from Plan and Zoning on that smaller committee that would be working that. So I guess I see it more as a kind of working together a bit, but.
I agree with Councilmember Schmidt. That's what I envision as well. Really, it's because it's so much work and the work that we are asking our volunteers to do is different than what our boards and commissions has been have been doing in the past. And so because we will have the assistance of Mark and Bob from St. Louis University kind of guiding us through this, we're kind of looking at it like Jenny, excuse me, Councilmember Schmidt said, excuse me, which is we'll have the volunteers look at zoning, hopefully have someone from the zoning commission, a part of that group, and then whatever comes out of that group, those recommendations can be given to the zoning committee, and they can look at that and and then they can discuss it and go from there. Overall, it's what Councilmember Schmidt said. I I envision it being like a back-and-forth bit of a conversation as we try to just work it, work it out. Does that make sense, Councilmember Phillips?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think, you know, I I'm interested to learn more as we go through the next the next item on the agenda about the 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 overall plan and to kind of hear more details about that. So so Kevin, if if you can stick around, hopefully you'll hear the the next portion of the meeting, kind of talking about what's happening overall. But yeah, I think, you know, having us all work together, since the zoning ordinances are such a huge portion. So I think the the more the the more eyes on it, the better.
Yeah, and and I thanks for letting me know that Amber Withacome volunteered. I volunteered for the Plan and Zoning, and I think maybe a couple other of the ordinance codes. It was back in the summer, so I I I forget which specific ones, but obviously I'd be, you know, happy to happy to serve in any role. And certainly a back-and-forth, you know, makes a certain amount of sense. And, you know, because, and to be honest, you know, a lot of it is cleaning up kind of archaic language and and, you know, there's 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 not many newsstands and and other things that are, you know, so, you know, and I think there'll be similar things that we're gonna find in the the residential districts that will need, you know, addressing and modernizing.
Mr. Sullivan, I appreciate you saying or using the word archaic. Yes. Thank you.
Anything else, Kevin?
No, that's all I have.
Does anyone else have any questions to Kevin?
I don't. Thank you so much for joining us, Mr. Sullivan. I appreciate you, and I appreciate the the commission and all the work that you all have done over the years.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'll 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 show up anytime, and hopefully it'll be in person at some point. So we'll keep fingers crossed there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Item number eleven, Community Values Presentation, Town Hall for Ordinance Review Discussion. I am going to ask Councilmember Schmidt to lead us in this and really go into like the deep dive, if you will. However, I do want to just let you all know kind of an overview, if that's okay, Councilmember Schmidt? Okay. So we met with Bob and Mark maybe about two weeks ago, and we discussed our next steps. And what they essentially told us is that we need to determine what our community values are. And once we are able to determine what our community values are, then we will be able to go forward with the work that we want to do with our ordinances. And so in order to to figure out what our community members' values are, we figured that we needed to have a town hall, probably two. Excuse me, and also, we wanted to see if we can work with the library to reach out to our families with children, because Jenny, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Schmidt, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, had a wonderful idea. And that idea was we would have our little ones and throughout our community also tell us what they value in a community, since they are being raised here, live here, they're going through. They may be going through our school system, Maplewood, Richmond Heights, or not, but they're still residents. They're still a part of our community. And so Councilmember Schmidt wanted to make sure that their voices were heard, and of course, I was ecstatic about that. It's a great idea. And so we're gonna have to go through that first phase, though, of collecting that information of just what's important to our community, what values it holds dear, because then, once we do that, our ordinances will be able to reflect that, or at least we will have a way to check what we're doing to make sure that it's it's in step with our community's values. So that was kind of like the overarching description that I wanted to give you all, and then have Councilmember Schmidt go into more details. But we definitely need to look at some dates before we move on from this item, so we can narrow that down and start advertising for it. All right, I'm done, Councilmember Schmidt.
No, that that was great. That was part of part of the agenda for tonight. So great. I sent you guys a long email on Friday night, and I hope you had a chance at least to just sort of glance through it and and see what I put together. But I I was gonna follow that sort of agenda that I had sent out, that was a Word document attached to the email, and start first with what I promised you guys last time, which was a Google Sheet, which I sent, that had the five chapters on it, and then which council members had previously been assigned to those, and then added in the board and commission members who had filled out that survey or the ranking survey as that particular ordinance as their first or second choice. But first, before we get into that, Mayor Canapper identified part of chapter twelve to address, and I guess to me, we had already identified chapter twelve, so it made sense to me to do the whole chapter and not just that ordinance, and I just wanted to confirm everyone else was okay with that. We good? Yeah, okay. And then, Mayor Canapper, since you suggested that one, I just went ahead and nominated you the chair, so if you're good with that, okay. Um, the only thing, we did have two board and commission members identify that chapter as their first or second choice, so I went ahead and put them there, but we do need a councilperson at least, and I guess this gets into the next discussion of like how many councilpeople we would like on a border commission. And so maybe I'll start there. Are we okay having the chair and one other councilperson? Is that, do we find that sufficient, or do you want there to be councilpeople?
I think one is sufficient. What do you all think?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so we would need one councilperson to volunteer for that one.
I had originally put that as one of my highest priorities, so.
Oh, you had? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm, because I know currently I'm only on zoning anyway, so.
Okay.
So I'm happy to to join Mayor Canapper on on chapter twelve as well.
All right, I already put you in there. Thank you. Councilmember Phillips? All right, and then I just wanted to point out, I was on four of the five, and that was very overambitious on my part. And so if we're okay with just having one person, then I would probably, I would stay on Parks and Recreation with Councilmember Wood unless someone else really wants to do that one.
I don't think did, because I don't think anybody else signed up for that, two people, and you and I.
Okay, so then I will probably then take myself off if if Councilmember Fockingham, you're okay still on human relations. I would take myself off that one, and then I think there was maybe one more. Maybe I'll stay on three. We'll see. All right, thank you. So that's that. And then was everyone okay with the board and commission member appointments, giving people their first and second choice? That seemed to make sense. All right, so the problem is, we have a couple where there's only one board and commission member. And so as I noted too, we had a writ, when we originally asked for board and commission members, people just responded, and then we subsequently sent out that survey, and not all of the people who initially responded filled out the survey. So my first thought was to reach out to those other four individuals and see if they were interested in serving on I guess any, I mean, really, in fairness, it should be any of them, and then we can go from there and see. If we don't have enough, then send everybody and see if anyone's interested in two. Does that make sense? All right. I also think we probably need to confirm with the board and commission members we've assigned that they are still willing to do this, since it was several months ago they agreed to do it. So that was also, I thought, part of the process. Does that make sense? Yeah.
So a quick question on that. Are you wanting the individual council members who are chairing this section to ask that the folks assigned to the commission? Or like, is it an overall email to them saying, like, please confirm that you're still interested?
So I thought it may make sense to have, like, we could work together to draft like a generic email that each chairperson could send out to their smaller commission, so they know which appointment they got, if that makes sense, and then and then do it that way? Does that work? Okay, I can draft that email and send it out to everybody.
Councilmember Schmidt, forgive me, if we have some community members that have already volunteered, you know, that are on a board and commission, and they they volunteered, but they want to volunteer for more groups, how how could they go about letting you or us know that?
Yeah, so I guess first, like we were just saying, like, I wanted to reach out to those four people who didn't fill out the second survey and see if they were interested, and then kind of see where we're at. I mean, I guess the question is too, we can always send that email. It's just how many people, you know, we had tried to keep the groups fairly small. So, you know, I guess the question is, how many board and commission members do we want to cap it at?
Well, didn't we say originally that we were gonna
Well, didn't we say originally that we were gonna try to keep it like five? Because if it gets to be too many, then it doesn't really work as well. Now, that was originally, if, if we change it, I don't know, but that was what I thought.
I think five is a good number. If I recall, looking at, at my group, I think we might have. We might have four now with councilmember Schmidt. I mean, Phillips, excuse me. So, okay, if we can have five and, and it's okay. To allow someone to do like more than one or.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. And we do have some where we're gonna get to the point where if, you know, we only have one, that we may need someone. If they're, you know, willing to help out, even if it wasn't one of their top choices, if they'd be willing to do that. You know, we'll just see when we're, when we're done and then go from there. But each, each committee had at least one board and commission member who identified it as their first or second priority.
I just have a quick question related to the appointments that are going to be happening. At the next council meeting. Will we also be extending the invitation to any of those newly appointed members?
Thank you, councilmember Phillips. I meant to say that. I, I, I think it would be nice. It up if people are interested, though I would still like to reach out to the four, I guess, that initially expressed interest that. And then I, I think that would be great.
Maybe to fill those gaps if we don't have.
All right, well, I'll, I'll put together like an email kind of walking through with draft email, various draft emails, and then we can all kind of figure it out together. All right, so I think that was it for number one, unless anyone had any other questions or suggestions or comments? No, okay, number two was. The Maplewood Ordinance Update Plan that Mark had put together. I sent you guys the document and I guess. I wonder if everyone had a chance to read it, if you have questions about it, any changes? Or if you guys want to have a little more time to review it and then talk about it?
I like it a lot. It helped me start like visualizing what this is going to look like. And so I appreciated that document from that angle. So I don't actually have any. Any edits.
I also read it and reviewed it, and it looks good to me. I wouldn't have anything to add that I could think of.
Yeah, I, I am just interested to hear more about how the town hall process is, is gonna happen. To gain that community input and. How the, this is gonna work into the timeline.
So that is actually then our next one, and that's actually up to all of us. So I don't, you know, this is all of our. Town hall. So the next thing I had was the committee, the community engagement process. So I had set forth like in the email and then on the, just some sort of proposed steps. And there's, you know, kind of based off what Mark had in this and what we had discussed with Mark and Bob. So the first thing was this concept of a town hall. You know, I guess, you know, for the group discussion is, you know. Is that a virtual event in person, a mixture, you know, that's something to discuss. I think virtual is nice because I think it's easier for everyone to get to, but. And then. So we could start, start there.
Yeah, I agree with the virtual. I think that's the easiest to execute right now, especially for like any working families. I don't mean to move us to the next step, but I, I want to just call out a couple of ongoing things that I think could help us. Essentially knock out like two birds with one stone. So I'm, if this is, if it was possible to align the overall town hall with. Any city manager updates. Whether that's like. Final person, so like it could be paired nicely with like a meet and greet. If it could be paired with the ongoing community survey. Right, if that is like up and launched and there's an ability to have folks come and take the survey in person, I think that would be beneficial for us. And so. I, like, I think a town hall on our community values is a good idea, but I also think the more we can include in that. Maybe the more we would attract and the more we would save ourselves in terms of time and effort. And so I think there's a couple of different pieces of what we'd want to include. In a town hall. In addition to. Discussion about community values.
So I think that is great, councilmember Crossley, and I think you could actually hit them both, sort of a. Meet and greet, for one, we talked about having multiple, and then one, maybe like learn about the community survey, like how you go about doing it, or what's it gonna tell us about that kind of stuff? So I think those are both really great ideas.
Free, wholeheartedly.
I do too. Sounds good.
Yep, sounds good.
And with that, so I just, I really, I think that. Kids are a huge part of our community and so, and I think kids are very smart. In tune with what their community is. And I know, especially in our school district, they teach a lot about community. And so I just thought it'd be great to hear from all school age children living in Maplewood. I thought if we could do something where kids could either draw a picture of what community looks like, or. You know, older kids could write sort of an essay. And I thought it would also be neat to do like a town hall with, with kids, a virtual one. Where, you know, you have a younger group and an older group and talk about community with them. You know, we could randomly select or, you know, do something like that. You know. Maybe even do a little prize, if that's legal for kids to, you know, if they submit, you know, they are entered to win something like. A Warwalk Waffles gift card or something like that. But anyway, that, I just, I think that's an important piece of community and kids have a way of. Thinking of things that we adults sometimes overlook, but.
Councilmember Schmidt, of course, you already know I love that idea. And I actually, my first meeting with Mr. Traxler. I told him that I wanted to have a kids' town hall. So this is perfect. And then to. Echo what councilmember Crossley said about, you know, making sure that we're doing. Multiple things with these town halls, with the kids' town hall. I, when I first talked to Mr. Traxler about that, I told him that I wanted to hear from them because during. The camp, my campaign for mayor, I talked with two children. They actually came up to me. And they, one child told me about some issues that they believe the city had with our railroad. At Sutton and Greenwood. And then another Maplewood little one. Told me about issues that he would see with our parks. And so that was like, oh my gosh, you know, our children, like, like you already have recognized are a part of our community and they're using our community. And they're seeing what's going on. So I would definitely like to hear about what they value. And then also what they see, like, you know. Problems that they think should be addressed, that, that council should be looking at as well. So just kind of meant what. Councilmember Crossley said with kids.
So I guess. We would kind of. I guess we would need to kind of create a better plan, like if we're all on board with that. So I think this gets to you, councilmember Phillips, what you were getting at. It's like, so now we need to make a more detailed plan of like. When that would be, what it would look like, et cetera. And then I think that, you know, we, the next step, which. You know, you, I mean, you can do also kind of with the first is, is creating smaller focus groups. I mean, I don't know. You know, I think there's other people in the community, you know, sort of picking some community stakeholders, identifying residents. You know, I had named a couple of ideas, just like business owners, residents. You know, I, I personally would like to hear from staff if there's like certain issues in. I mean, I think to me, that's especially important in things that involve a process, like that comes from an ordinance, like issues they've raised. You know, the police department is enforcing many of our ordinances, like what are problems they've seen with the way some of our ordinance are written that. They're outdated or whatever. So, I mean, those were just suggestions. We don't have to include those people. But I think, you know, if anyone has suggestions for who you might want to be in a smaller focus group?
No, I like your addition of staff. I think that's a really crucial piece. Just touching briefly on like the town hall. I'm happy to like draft a proposal, kind of taking what's been said in this for the council's like review and. Editing and approval for the next meeting. If you all would like me to do that, I'm happy to volunteer for that.
I would very much appreciate it, councilmember Crossley. Thank you.
I like the idea of inviting. City staff. To these focus groups. I would also. And I think you said, you said our small businesses as well. I would like to also make sure we have a good amount of nonprofits. In Maplewood, so I'd like to make sure that we are inviting our nonprofits to this as well.
And I think, you know, it's not necessarily like one, one focus group, so we can. Several smaller groups. And I know Mark was really interested in, in also attending these because, you know, it's easier, it's easier to hear firsthand always. You know, if you're the one who has to go out and find the stuff, so.
Could I make a, a suggestion for, you know, like. People that we could put on in these focus groups or just ask? So the MRH School Board would have like a list, basically they would just ask each person. To provide like a certain amount of names, so that person would be responsible for asking, you know, would you like to be a part of this focus group? And then we could just have this master list that we all build together. So we could be responsible for asking people, would you like to be a part of this? And then once we get, you know, our five to ten names, then we can bring it back. So that's just a suggestion. And it doesn't have to be exactly that, but just to kind of make sure that. We are getting a diverse and inclusive group of people to be a part of these focus groups.
Would it make sense to? I mean, I, I mean, I probably can think of a couple. Focus groups that would make sense, but would it also make sense to wait till after a town hall? Well, once we get input from the community that we can say, oh, gosh, you know, hey. Maybe we should get this, you know, these people together and have a discussion or, you know, what have you, so. Cause you brought it up, I mean, focus groups are great. But, you know, you want them pretty targeted. For them to be effective. And I think after a town hall meeting, besides a couple that we should do regardless. We'll, we'll better focus. Better focus us for that.
I agree, councilmember.
I do like the idea of the beginning the work now of possibly identifying some people. Since we don't necessarily know who will show up to a town hall, like I think it would also be helpful to start some sort of list like that. You know, however we want to do it is fine. I agree, it'd be helpful to wait, maybe to do them or at least reserve. You know, you maybe do one or two people we know we want to hear from and then do a couple. But I agree, you will probably identify certain issues. That you would want certain people to participate in.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying delay the list. Let's, I think that's a great idea that Mayor Canapar had. But, you know, I think there, once after a town hall or two, we'll probably figure out that there's a couple more. You know, small focus groups that we should focus on too as well.
For sure.
Do we have a current, or do you all have a current vision for like who would be facilitating these focus groups? And I think my second question is like, is the, is the focus of the focus groups to think about the specific sections that we've identified as priorities? Or is it just like the overall current code of ordinances?
So I had not gotten that far. I don't know if Mayor Canapar you had, but my thought is that's something we can determine as a group, how we want to approach that.
And I'd like to. I'd like to go back to Mark and ask him that, because. Yes, I would just like to go back to Mark and ask him that and see what. Advice or insight he could give to us. And then also let me tell you all, they, Bob and Mark will join us. For a presentation on the twenty second of this month. And so we will be able to ask them questions. And also they'll provide the entire council with a presentation on how they're going to assist us, so. But we have a meeting with Mark on Thursday, and so I will make sure that that question is, is brought up. Make a note of it now.
So I think, you know, something that I think would be helpful while we're, we're working on this first two steps. And after we get our committees finalized, would be simultaneously like to have the committee members look at their ordinance. And, you know, see if they themselves have any suggested changes or concepts that they want investigated by Mark and Bob. And then meet as a group at least once and talk about that together. And then. You know, and that may take one or two meetings, and this is all, you know, flexible. But then the next step also would be then, once we have all these town halls and. Smaller focus groups, you know, this may change depending on the question councilmember Crossley raised about how those are tailored. But like, then the committees would meet and synthesize some of that, you know, information and with their own information. And put together sort of a report about, you know, what, what they, what, what their committee has identified. Any particular values or objectives, you know, particular to their ordinance or their chapter. And then what they want researched, changed, added, et cetera. And then those reports could be presented to the council as a whole. And then together we would synthesize all of that along with our, you know, overarching community values. Which maybe before then, we've sort of sat down as a group, done a work session and kind of worked through some overarching ones. And provide like a final set and list. I mean, that is clearly all subject to change and whatever, but I didn't know. That was the way that seemed to make the most sense going forward, based on where we are now. But I don't know if anyone has any other suggestions or.
Right. He's good.
Okay, well, we can re, we can keep revisiting it as we do this. And so I think that if no one, does anyone have any other questions or suggestions on the steps? No, all right. So then the next thing, from what we had discussed with Bob and Mark was sort of their question of, was what did we want a final, like the final product to look like from them? And, you know, what Mayor Canapar and I had identified, just sort of off the cuff, was like, you know, a report that. Described sort of what their, that had their suggestions in it. And then I think it was sort of, you know, why they were suggesting it, you know, what changes they were making, why. You know, maybe have, maybe a little bit of how they tied our values if necessary. And then I also was wondering about if there's any trends in ordinances and certain types of ordinances, like if they incorporated those. I don't know if, if that type of report makes sense to you guys, or if you'd like a different format. I know we can always probably change that going forward, since we're not really heavy into it, but. Any thoughts off the bat, what you'd like that to look like?
I would also, so I, I like that. I also think any sort of like after action reporting that they can do. So it's like an evaluation of the process itself that they can provide. I don't know if that's out of scope, but. It would be great to have some sort of historical document, so that if in ten years, another council wants to do this. They have some sort of like lessons learned document from like how we went about it. And I'm not sure if that's something that like we would have to like write ourselves or fill out some sort of survey, but. Like, that's a very like common thing to do in like an emergency response, so that there's some historical. Document capturing any opportunities. So I think that's the only thing I would add, but I like the idea of sort of like a comprehensive document of here are the changes. I like what you said, Jenny, about like trends and ordinances that may have been either touched on or not touched on within the scope of our work. I would just add the, you know, lessons learned piece.
I want to piggyback off of what councilmember Crossley just said, and. I want to piggyback off of what Councilmember Crossley just said and let you all know that during our last meeting with Mark and Bob, we talked about a part of our ordinances is going to touch on reconciliation. Excuse me, and I'm thankful to Councilmember Crossley for bringing up the historical aspect of it because that, that's also, that plays into the history of like, that will play into the history of why, why we are looking at that particular, why we looked at that particular ordinance, you know, 10 years ago. If the council, 10 years in the future is looking at this, like why, why we made these changes? And also our community can see it as well. So for example, you know, we have the nuisance ordinance that, that has been an issue. And we'll get into, Mark and Bob will get into more details about the reconciliation part of it, but like a part of the ordinance, just the introduction of the ordinance could say something like, you know, we recognize that this nuisance ordinance was not in the best interest of everyone in our community and it was, it had, it had done some harm. And so we want to make sure that everyone is, is cared for in our community and we have addressed the ordinances as follows. So something like that to also put, you know, in, in our, in our ordinances, like this is the history of it. This is why we made this change. So that's kind of going to be embedded, but I do agree with you. We do need to have like that document that gets into more detail as to why we made that change. But like I said, Mark and Bob will go over that with us in more detail. But if you have any questions for me on that right now, please feel free to ask.
So I agree with Mayor Canapra, that's important piece of all of this is sort of thing, you know, the past in order to move forward into a, you know, into the future. So the next thing that I had was sort of the rest of the ordinances, which we don't necessarily have to do now. We have a lot on our plate, but I had sent a Google sheet that, or is that what it's called? The spreadsheet that has all the rest of the ordinances that we haven't assigned to a group. And, you know, at some point it would be good for us to go through and I had offered two suggestions of how people could rank them. I, I mean, I am, if those two suggestions are okay with people, I'm fine if people want to use either or and then, you know, sort of synthesize. Did those two methods seem like they may work or did anyone have a different suggestion? And just
I liked this.
Okay, go ahead.
I liked the second one, just because like, what's the difference between ranking something 16 versus 17? Versus like group two through six is just a little bit simpler to navigate. I'm, did you have? Okay, we don't, we haven't set a deadline for when you want that.
No, and I thought as a group we could do that. Yeah, I had that on here. Cause I know, you know, we've got a lot right now, but it would be helpful at some point in the near future to do that. And I know most of us already sort of kind of engaged in that process when we started. I agree with you. For me, it may be easier to do sort of groups, but I, I thought, you know, we're all different, you know, so maybe someone else wants to do the one through whatever.
Can you clarify how many you would expect in a group?
So I think it would be, so there's, I mean, I would do, you can do it how you want, but it would make sense to me to do five, 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 and then the last one would have four, but you know. And this is the other thing, some of them may not need to go through this process, and I think part of that ranking is sort of identifying those because I think there's some like we'd already identified that, for instance, like Councilmember Fockingham had identified like the pet thing and like maybe that doesn't need to go through this huge process. I don't know, maybe it does. So that I think is also a step of this is figuring out which other ones maybe we can work on simultaneously that aren't as much work.
Maybe then, oh, sorry, Karen, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I had looked at some too, and just another example was vegetation. I'm not sure, you know, I mean, that's important, but I'm not sure it needs to go through that whole process with Mark. Anyway, but there are others that I saw too. So that is a good point, I think.
Maybe then the categories could be like two through six or, or NA if we think the process is like not applicable. So anything we think should sort of not be sent through this, we could categorize as such with the abbreviation NA.
That works for me. Any other suggestions or thoughts?
No, I like the grouping.
Okay, so deadline. Who likes to set a deadline? I like to set a deadline because then I do it.
Yes, I'm just kind of looking at our calendar and some of the things we've got going on. I would like, and the fact that this is sort of like planning in the future, I would like to recommend either July 13th or July 27th as a deadline, just to give us some time.
That's what I was gonna suggest too. So I'm right on board with you there. Does that, does everyone else feel good about that?
This is a deadline about ranking. Is that what, oh yeah, I think that's plenty of time. To me, the 13th, you know, would be fine.
Agreed.
Okay.
I don't think it's that long.
Okay, and I can send a friendly reminder. Cause I know sometimes these things get down low in your, your inbox. It's hard to keep track of them. Okay, perfect. So the next steps, I think we're, we're done unless anyone had anything else on that. Nope. Next step, I think we kind of went over some of this. It's like the process for finalizing the board of commission members. I will do that email to you all. Town halls, I guess we need to sort of, I guess maybe, do we want, I don't know, Mayor Canapra, if you wanted to think about some dates now, I'll let you, if you had a certain timeline you were envisioning with that.
Okay, so let me circle back. Thank you. Let me circle back to what Councilmember Crossley had discussed about doing more with the opportunity that we have to have these, when we have these town halls. So, okay, Councilmember Crossley, I need you to help me through this. Thank you.
Honestly, I was just gonna propose some dates
Okay.
in my proposal, which I am planning on getting to you all no later than June 20th. So if, if it's okay with you all, I can just propose them.
That's fine. Are we looking? Are we, I'm, I'm hoping to do this before school starts. Have about both of the town halls before school, and I think school is like August, maybe 24th.
Honestly, I was just gonna recommend the end of July or beginning of August and a couple of dates in there because I was also in the old business section, gonna ask Anthony for an update on the community survey. So just kind of trying to align those if possible. So I will highlight a couple of things in that, but I will specifically look at before August, the end of August.
So I guess I have a question with respect to the kids. You know, I thought it, I guess I didn't know if it was possible. I know, I'm sure the school district even, I mean, school is almost over. It's over on Thursday. But I'm sure they'd be willing to send out an email, you know, or included on an email blast. And then the library, very kindly has said in the chat that they were, they're in, I assume it has to do with this and can do what we, what they can. So, you know, I guess I didn't know if we wanted to, is that a good project for, for kids over the summer when maybe they have a little bit more time or? I don't know what people's thoughts.
I think so. That's why I was like, let's try to get it in before school starts because I just, when school starts, I know everybody is just not going to be focused on, you know, a town hall and taking part in that. But if you're, Councilmember Schmidt, if you are asking about like interacting with the children sooner rather than later, then yeah, I think absolutely we could get on that. And I think, I, I see that in the, in the chat, the Maplewood Library has said yes. They, so we could, we could really get started on that, like, I mean, soon.
Yeah. So I'll put together something. I kind of started, you know, thinking about sort of what that physically, like what it would look like or what would we, how would we would propose it to kids? So I can work on that and send something to you guys. And we can sort of brainstorm together, you know, change it or stuff like that. Does that work? Yeah.
Yeah. And if some reason we can't, you know, squeeze a town hall in for the kids, I would imagine that we could work with MRH as they are into civics and community and do a, you know, do a town hall with the students, you know, in, in, in an evening or something like that with, you know, questions to the council or to the city manager, to the mayor, you know, whatever the case may be, so.
With, and that, I, that's a good point, Councilmember Fockingham. And I know the middle school actually offers a class on like Maplewood, Richmond Heights. Like, so that might be great, even when school starts to just tap in for a smaller focus group is.
Yeah, I have a feeling during the summer, you're not going to get the kind of attendance that you would like. You know, kids, kids' town hall, so. You know.
But doing the paper submission would be good, I think, in the summer, like the drawings and the, yeah.
Right, yeah. No, but yeah, the town hall itself is probably better at the, during the school year.
Agreed. Agreed.
I was gonna suggest, and actually our, our library has chimed in about their summer reading program. And I was gonna just throw out there that if they have any book recommendations that would tie into the theme, that maybe we could do something like that.
I like that idea. That's good.
All right, so I also want to, I want to give a shout out to our, our PTO and also an MRH MS student, Mr. Patrick Myers. He's given us some good, some good advice too, so. Thank you all. I'm so excited. We have community members that are already excited about this process. This is cool.
And Sarah, thanks for putting this together for us. Appreciate it, Councilmember.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sean, how dare you?
All right. So the last thing is that we do have a meeting with Mark scheduled on Thursday at 2:00. If anyone would like to join, I actually may not be able to join or maybe only to join shortly. So if anyone else would like to jump on, just let us know. Let Mayor, yes, Councilmember?
Yeah, no, I'm available then.
Okay.
Oh, great. Okay. I will, I will send you the link.
All right. And that was all I had unless someone else had anything else. All right. Thanks, guys. I'm excited.
Me too.
Thanks, Councilmember Schmidt, for putting this together. It's great. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. Item number 12. Madam Clerk, would you please give us the final reading?
Yeah. Bill 6164, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, adopting the budget for the City of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve Bill 6164?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, thanks, Anthony and everybody there. A lot, a lot of work went into this one and it's much appreciated, so.
Thanks, Sean. Remember there'll be another version which we'll post, which will be for the distinguished budget award. We have 60 days after adoption, so that would put it right around September. So we'll make sure to send a blast out in a social media post to residents so they can take a look at the, the new budget format.
Yeah, and get us some feedback on it too. That'd be great. That's awesome.
All right, hearing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, may we please have a vote by rule call?
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Canapra?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Ordinance number 5958 is approved.
Thank you. Item number 13, old business?
Um, if this is an appropriate time to ask for an update on the community survey, I would like to ask that of Anthony.
Yep. Councilmember Crossley, we've sent two different versions back of the samples because they initially provided us with samples from a variety of cities. Weldon Springs was one, right? So there was discussions about rural roads and other items that aren't of interest. We've been paring that down. We're anticipating a third version back to us within the next week. Within a day or two, we'll get those changes back. And then we believe we'll have something more refined at that point for the city council. And then the council can review that and add or delete whatever it is they, they want to at that point. But we just tried to get it a little more refined before we brought it to you. But again, it'll be ultimately whatever the council wants to go out, I anticipate 10 days, maybe two weeks before we get that back.
Okay.
And once that's done, then we can give them the notice to go ahead and start soliciting interest.
Awesome. So do you think it's more realistic for us to have like a draft reviewed and finalized by the end of this month, or do you think like the first meeting in June, July?
I would think the first meeting in July. I think we could, we can email that out and we could, I mean, I think it'll be pretty close. So I think we could probably do it just with people making comments, but in worst case scenario, we can put it down as an item to discuss to finalize if we need to do a work session or do an account for meetings. But I think it'll be pretty close to being completed when you guys see it at least. But again, we're, we're looking for whatever suggestions the council has.
Awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Any additional old business? Item number 14, council communication.
We have any? Yeah, just briefly, Councilmembers Schmidt, Phillips and myself were at the summer concert at the end of May, which feels like a lifetime ago, but it was a great event and the music was awesome and we had some people come up to our table. So if you're at the next event, I would encourage you to, like Councilmember Wood brought up earlier in the meeting, to come say hi to your representatives.
All right. Thank you. Any additional communication? All right. Item number 15, mayor's report. I would like to let you all know that on June 16th, I will host a town hall. I have invited the St. Louis County Assessor, Mr. Jake Zimmerman, to join me in discussing property assessments that Maplewood residents have received. And we are also going to discuss best practices for appealing those property assessments. So that will be on June 16th. And you know what, let me get the time. Forgive me. I believe the time is 6 o'clock. However, there is, I may be wrong about that time. There is communication up. It is at 5:30. Thank you. It is at 5:30 on the 16th, and there should be information coming from City Hall from that, via email, on Facebook, or possibly a text message. So that should be posted. And it is going to be a virtual town hall and it will also be recorded. And so if you are not able to view it at 5:30 on the 16th, then it will be posted later and you'll be able to review it at your leisure. And then also on June 19th, that is June 10th, also known as Freedom Day. And I understand there will be some celebrations and events happening in and around Maplewood. So keep an eye out for more information on that. I will let you know that I am planning a scavenger hunt. I'm very excited about this, y'all. So anyways, the scavenger hunt will take participants to different locations around the St. Louis area that that will have historical impacts and insights on St. Louis and all of us, really. So happy Freedom Day in advance. And that concludes my mayor's report. Item number 16. Attorney Graves?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Item number 17, Mr. Traxler, do you have a report?
Nothing aside from what I, I handed out, I didn't know if the town hall notes, hindsight, it would have been nice to probably put this in a Google Doc, but I think we've got a lot of different comments. This is what I think they're designed for the Google Docs. But I emailed Councilmember Schmidt a word version of this. I can email anyone if they want additional changes. I think we're pretty close to incorporating everyone's comments. I know there were quite a few. And if the council's okay with it, then I can have Laura create a draft webpage, which we can send out to the council, make sure they're okay with that, and then we can post it and get, you know, basically check this off the list. Everyone okay? Close?
I had, I had one minor comment that was just repeating where you referenced in plan zoning about meetings, just mirroring the language that was in sustainability, where it said you could go to like offer comments and stuff. I can email, I'm sure that's much easier, but
sustainability and parks too, because I mirrored parks.
Oh, that, that's what it was, parks, I think.
So I'll mirror that language and then be okay?
Yeah, it was just because it told them they could go to those meetings and make comments too, so I liked that. But thank you for incorporating all of our comments, and I really appreciate it. I know it was a lot of work.
Well, thanks for all the comments. I know, I know Jenny and Sandy put a lot of time into that as well. Everyone did. But I know especially some of the comments we got back, so we'll get that that change. And then I'll have Laura send out like a draft or like a link to a part of our website that won't be public yet. And then she'll put a deadline. If you're okay with this, let us know, and then we can go live. And then the second thing was the board of commission packet examples. And keep in mind, we can, we're trying to create just a simple template, so each one will look roughly the exact same. So if we ever want to add something in the future that we think is beneficial, we can always just go through and quickly change every single one of these. But I'd really like to get an answer on this, even if it's not necessarily perfect. I'd like to get these to the new members, because we're gonna be obviously appointing a lot of new board and commission members. And I'd like to have this emailed to them whenever we do the resolutions essentially finalizing these. So if you have comments, let me know. If not, we'll start creating similar documents for every board and commission we have.
Did, I just had a question about that. Did you run that by the people that are already on the boards to see if they thought that this was a good packet, or, I mean, I didn't know if that was part of the process or not, because they've been
I could reach out to some and ask them if they have any other additions.
Because I didn't see anything, but then some of those boards I've never been on. So that's why I just thought I'd throw that out there, you know? That'd see something that I would not necessarily see.
Yeah, I had a, another member from a board that actually had some suggestions, and I've been communicating back and forth with her. And she said, if I see anything different, actually, she's on the, it was, I believe it was Laney Schenkelberger. She said she's gonna send me additional comments if, as they come up. So I mean, again, we can easily add or subtract. That's why I wanted the same format for each one. It's not, even though we have multiple staff members working on it, I wanted just to create a format so it's simple to change. So for example, if Laney has some suggestions, it's a simple fix for all of them. So I'll follow up with her and see if she has anything, because she had some good suggestions. She was actually happy that we were doing this, because that was what her initial inquiry was. And if everyone else is okay with it, I'll, I'll get moving on these others. And if in the future some things come up, we can always change them. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks for doing those.
I have nothing else to report.
Mr. Traxler, could we actually send everyone instead of just the new members? And maybe you were planning on doing that? You were gonna send it to everyone on the boarding commission? I'm sorry, what?
All of them, yeah, even the ones that have commissions like Kevin Sullivan or Larry Tonight's been on here for a long time. They'll all get these. And then we're gonna update them each year, because it'll have the updated budget figures in these. So every year, not only new members, but every member will get it, just so they'll have a latest version. It's just a PDF, so it's not like we're just a simple email. We'll make sure to include that with all of them.
All right. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Item number 18, public forum. At this time, the public is invited to make a comment.
I don't see any hands up, Mayor Knapper.
All right, well, I would like to just take this time then to thank everyone who has made comments thus far this evening, especially our MRH middle school student, Mr. Patrick Myers. Thank you for watching and participating in your local government. That is really dope. So thank you so much. All right. At this time, could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Wait, I'm sorry. That, thank you. Strike that.
Testing me. You're testing me on my first night.
I get it. You, you got it. All right, excuse me. May I have a motion to hold closed session?
Motion to hold a closed session regarding a personnel matter?
Second? I'm sorry.
I just couldn't unmute fast enough.
Come on, Sean.
Okay, Madam Clerk, may I please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Knapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
All right. Attorney Graves, help me. We, I can just make a statement that we are not returning. I see Councilmember Schmidt adding, saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Graves.
And then, and then at the end of the closed session, you'll adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We will not return to this session, y'all. So good night.
All right, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.